Call this public meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the God, the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, and the miserable will liberate and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our service men and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Edward Sandy and Ann Marie Nancy Finerty. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
Here. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I would like to make a statement in reference to last week's council meeting. I understand a lot of hateful statements were made, some were directed towards speakers, some towards council members. It is my job as council president to not allow hateful and derogatory remarks to be directed at any one individual. As council president, I take full responsibility for not doing my job to maintain order at last week's meeting. I apologize for not performing my job properly. It is responsibility of council, and it is not the responsibility of the council members to maintain order, it is mine. This is not an excuse for my behavior or to deflect blame to anyone else. Going forward, I will fulfill my duties that I promised to uphold when I was sworn in as council president. The hate we see on television every day, from our federal government all the way down, has become a normal everyday occurrence. The constant barrage of negative news, political dysfunction can lead to inaction, believing that our actions don't matter and change is impossible. At times, I have allowed myself to accept those beliefs. After much thought and conversation with family and friends, I fully understand the need for respectful dialogue and listen to different perspectives is essential to working together for positive change. In the future, I will do my best to enforce council rules. I respectfully request that all council members and council solicitor immediately intervene when council rules are being broken. Respectfully, Jerry Smurl.
Third order, 3A, single tax office city funds distributed comparison report for year-to-date June 6, 2025, and year-to-year comparison report for June 6, 2024 through June 6, 2025. 3B, correspondence received from Scranton City Council President Gerald Smurl, received June 6, 2025.
Are there any comments on the third order items? If not received and filed, do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one, I was asked to read this two weeks in a row. So Holy Rosary Centers Merry Mother of God Parish Block Party is Friday and Saturday. Friday, there'll be a veterans ceremony at 6:00. Saturday, Jim Sammonero will be at 5:00 PM, which is the Chatter Band. As always, they have great food, beer tent games, rassle raffles, live music, and it's from 7:00 to 10:00 on Friday and 6:00 to 10:00 on Friday. On Saturday, I'm sorry, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thomas, President. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to mention going on right now up until Saturday, so the 10th to the 14th is the Scranton Greek Food Festival, and it's one of my favorite times of year, and you can get really amazing Greek food. That's at the Greek Orthodox Church over on Washington Avenue, 505 North Washington Ave, across from the library. So you can order in person or online at greekfoodscranton.com. And the phone number if you're going to call is 570-342-0566. And there are a couple other notes that I wanted to mention prior to the start of public comment in our meeting tonight. First off, it's great seeing this room filled, it's beautiful. I think it's what community means to Scranton, the community coming together, and I hope that many of you who are here tonight will continue to show up in the future or just become active in local government and educated on what's happening within our city. I think it's a great thing to have more of that. And I understand your outrage, and I stand with our LGBTQ community. I stand against hatred, discrimination, bullying, and I will always speak out against it. I ask of everyone to be respectful if you choose to speak tonight. And I also wanted to take this time to thank President Gerald Smurl for his statement and for his apology. I know he's worked incredibly hard in this role and on council, and I've been able to witness that firsthand, and I have a lot of respect for him. We've worked well together over the years, and he's always been, I feel like, an ally for LGBTQ people. And like you, I also want the rules of council to be enforced equally, and I appreciate his statement of his commitment to do so. Thank you for allowing me to take that time, and if anyone else has any announcements.
Thank you. Anyone else?
President Smurl, I realize I was the first one last week that was critical of the fact that you didn't use the gavel. I was not as upset with you as I was with the hate speech, the bigotry, the harassment, the personal attacks, the discrimination, the bullying. While I was critical of you for not gavelling that out, I was more upset that people would come into these chambers and attack people personally. That's upsetting to me. We're here to conduct city business, we're not here to attack people. This is supposed to be a welcoming environment to everyone, to all people, regardless of what our views are. We all have different political views, we all have different thoughts, but at no time should there be attacks on other human beings, and at no time should anyone feel disrespected, harassed, or uncomfortable, or intimidated to come into these chambers, or actually to walk our streets or be part of this great city of Scranton. So I appreciate the fact that you, as a true leader, took some responsibility where you felt you were wrong. I truly appreciate that. And I will say that Jerry Smurl probably works as hard, if not harder than anyone on this council. The things that he does for this city are unbelievable, and I know that he truly believes that, you know, this needs to be an open city, a welcoming city to everyone. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First analyst, Angela Ramon.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to start by thanking Council President Smurl for his apology for his inaction last week regarding all of the disgusting hateful speech and abuse and harassment that was directed towards me. I would also like to state more explicitly, because I didn't comment on it last week, that I was very disappointed in the inaction, not just for myself, because I do, as an individual, have a right and really an obligation to be here and participate in our local government as a resident, as a citizen here, and I do have a right to be protected from that, from those types of attacks and from that type of hate. And more so than just myself, I was afraid that attack, the attacks on me last week, if left unanswered, would lead to many other people in our city, like myself, feeling too afraid to speak out and feeling too afraid to have their voices heard by their own representatives. Not everyone has the time or courage or ability to come up here and speak, of course, but everyone should have the opportunity to have their voice heard and feel listened to by their representatives, especially regarding city business. And in that regard, I would like to submit Chapter 296. For, I hand this to you, I believe? Yep. And that is our city's anti-discrimination ordinance, which was passed many years ago. While it is quite extensive in its protections for the LGBT community, there are many areas in which it falls short, namely in failing to more explicitly protect healthcare for trans individuals and all LGBTQ individuals in our city. It also does not do enough to define certain types of attacks against LGBTQ individuals as hate crimes, which the city of Scranton should have a vested interest in doing. So I do believe that it is in the best interests of our city moving forward to strengthen the protections that we currently have. There are many cities in our Commonwealth who, that have been doing the same lately. Allentown is an example that comes to mind with their R34 resolution to make Allentown a safe haven for all LGBTQ plus individuals. In addition, as far as more short-term goals and requests for the city of Scranton, I would request that the city council does take more seriously violations of the rules for speakers here, because while we do have a right to our freedom of speech, we do not have a right to harass people inside these chambers. And if someone really does have more offensive things that they want to get off their chest and communicate with the city council, there are more direct ways to do that, not at this podium. You can write, you can call, you can email, there are other ways to make sure that your right to be heard is still respected while still protecting everyone else who comes into our city. I would also like to take a moment to thank William King and Dr. Jessica Rothschild for speaking out, as well as several of the audience members last week who had spoken out immediately about the hatred that was directed towards me. And just to quickly recap some of the things that were done and some points of failure, one of the speakers who had come here last week was not a resident of Scranton, did not put an address down on the sign-in sheet, and was not asked about his address when he had come up to speak. I do have some documents here with his most recent known address down in, just to double check, I believe it was down in Kingston. That's the Supreme Court disciplinary record for Anthony Moses, who spoke here last week. It is stapled in two parts, that's just because the, there was not a stapler available to me powerful enough to put 40, about 45 pages together at once. But yeah, that's all I have for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ethan Emker?
Hello. Firstly, I wanted to say I was disappointed on how the previous city council meeting was handled, and I would like to thank council for their remarks about it and their apologies for how it was handled, so thank you. Sorry, I'm not very good at public speaking. And since it feels relevant, I would also like to recognize that we do have some decent protections for LGBTQ residents in Scranton already, as long as we enforce it. For example, it is currently illegal to discriminate against members of a protected class, which does include both gender identity and sexual orientation in regards to housing, employment, and public services. And I know it was already mentioned, how Allentown City Council recently passed Resolution R48 in order to protect LGBTQ residents and people fleeing states with anti-LGBTQ laws as well. And this resolution specifically protects gender-affirming healthcare, and I just wanted to say I would really like it if Scranton could pass a similar resolution. I know I personally have weighed like the pros and cons of staying in Scranton, but Scranton's my home, I have lots of friends and community who are here, and I know not everyone has like the resources to just up and move to continue receiving the care that they need. So I would just like to ask you to protect gender-affirming healthcare in Scranton and, of course, strictly enforce council rules in regards to harassment in these chambers, which I know you guys have already committed to doing, so I wanted to thank you for that. I didn't have much to say, so thank you.
Thank you. Please, excuse me. I have to uphold all of the rules, and applause is out of order. Thank you. Joan Hoda-Wanis?
Joan Hoda-Wanis, Scranton. I cannot believe not one of you mentioned the significance of Saturday, June 14th, Flag Day. And on top of that, it's the 250th anniversary of the founding of the United States Army. Shame on you all. No clap. Okay. I do want to thank also DPW workers, they did a really fine job in front of the, at the storm drain in front of the cathedral, because we had a lot of rain in the past weeks, and it has not pooled, it has not flooded the sidewalk, so people going to mass are able to get up the steps without getting splashed by passing cars. So thank you, DPW. And we're still working on their union contract?
They are.
Okay, that's good. Now, with regard to last week's public comments, I was the first speaker, so I didn't get to comment on what happened afterwards. Bob Bolus is driving me crazy. You have to admire him for all the good things he does. His Christmas dinners for the past 30 years, his efforts to bring back the remains of fallen WWII soldiers from Okinawa, and so much more. But when someone pulls his chain, he has a tendency to go off the deep end. During his public comments last week, Bob mentioned that he was a Catholic and a veteran. Well, so am I. However, as a Catholic, I must agree with the late Pope Francis. When asked for his opinion on gay priests, Pope Francis gave a very Christ-like answer. Who am I to judge? And as for gays serving in the military, things have changed since I enlisted 50 years ago, yes, 50 years. When I was in the army, gays had to stay in the closet or risk being administratively discharged or worse. When I was in uniform, there were a lot, and I mean a lot, of heterosexual soldiers that I wouldn't trust as far as I could throw them. And as for the kind of people I want living in Scranton, I want people who are willing to work for a living, who pay their fair share of taxes, who obey the law, and who, if they disagree with the law, work within the system to change it. In short, Bob and I have a lot in common, and I respect him for his contributions to Scranton and America. But I totally disagree with his comments last week, both at this podium and at his seat. He was rude, crude, and socially unacceptable. And Mr. Smurl, I appreciate the statement you provided in third order. It takes a big man to admit a mistake. Having said that, I want to commend city council for renaming Cliff Street in honor of John M. Hart Jr. I'm proclaiming June 17th as John M. Hart Jr. Day. I'm sure there are many other Scrantonians who deserve a like honor. Finally, I saw on the city's website and on the entranceway coming into City Hall, a notice of public funding for Hilltop Heights, a project to build 36 apartments on the corner, I guess, of South Webster and Saginaw Street. It was the first heard for me, my parents' home is about two blocks from that area. But as you should know, Hilltop Manor, which is in the same area, has attracted a lot of police incidents, many drug-related. Can you give us some information on this project so that the people can comment on it in the future? Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. And I will, first I heard of that, I thought it was supposed to be an elderly housing project, but that's news to me. Next, Bob Bolus.
I'd like to have this presented to council, please. First off, I'd like, Bob Bolus, Scranton. First off, I'd like to set the Scranton Times straight in the negative articles that they printed on me over the weekend. First off, the statement was made by the Times that I failed to respond to a issue with a neighborhood, Oaks and Slaughterback. What I have before me, it was due on the 14th, and I have in front of me, which I was hoping Chris Kelly was here, it was received on 5/12/25 at 3:15, well within the time that I filed the appeal, so the incompetence and stupidity of the people that write the Scranton Times articles that go disparaging me, they could all go to hell, there's the facts. I make no excuse for last week. I've been part of this country, I've been all over the world, I've contributed much more than anybody that came up and spoke about who I am and what I'm about. I'm going to read what I gave you. June 10th, city council meeting, I'd like to ask council a rhetoric question. What's the difference between a public forum for the opening exchange of ideas and liberal echo chamber where you're threatened with censorship and removal if most of council doesn't like your viewpoint, doesn't agree with it? This version of council seems to be running ladder, last week during the first part of the meeting where city business is discussed, and during the time council was conducting business and voting on resolutions, Councilwoman Rothschild spoke what she has the right to do, just as I have the right to disagree with her views and values. During the discussion of city business, she spent just from about five-minute mark to the seven-minute mark discussing and raising and displaying the queer flag at City Hall and Queer Month. She noted that the mayor and council president were present at the flag-raising ceremony on June 1. She announced two organizations calling themselves Queer NEPA, the Rainbow Alliance, which had an itinerary of various festivities to celebrate Queer Month. She announced the stride for queer race, she announced that the Fringe Festival was conducting a queer event. To any reasonable person, that sounds a lot like city business, and it certainly is city business, unless, of course, council doesn't like your viewpoint on that city business, then they can say you're out of line in discussing city business. This was truly being an armor. Life doesn't get easier as we go, we get stronger. This is a forum for the opening exchange of ideas, it isn't a Browning Scout meeting. No reasonable and sound mind should have felt Trent last week. Law enforcement is present, and this is a safe environment for anybody here. As important as that to the point of the day and age, to tell the truth, I doubt if anybody really felt unsafe. I think saying this is supposed to be a safe place is often posturing, and more actual cowardice to avoid an intelligent debate and censor any viewpoints that don't mirror the ones council established. And Chris Kelly's far-left propaganda hit piece that he tried to pass off as an editorial, he wondered why council president gravel me and have me removed. Well, Chris, maybe Mr. Smurl believes in free speech, and he's educated and aware that our federal courts are especially harsh on viewpoint discrimination. He might understand that a public forum is a place to openly discuss ideas, even ideas members of council are going on a stone-like hearing because they disagree. For people who preach inclusion and tolerance, the left shows shocking hypocrisy. The only included and tolerant those who blindly repeat their progressive platform, and they're in denial that over half the country can't stand their policy. You folks got kicked out of Washington this past November, so maybe, just maybe, there are other views besides yours. I don't believe Queer Month should be city business, but if council injects it into the city business, I'm going to address it, and you can claim you're offended and outraged, you can be appalled, and you can criticize me all you want. That's intelligently dishonest, and it's bullying and manipulative. I filed, I filed a lawsuit and a petition for mandamus to have the queer flag removed from City Hall. Why, there's...
Stop. Go ahead.
May I continue? For one, there is no legitimate, my time is gone because I got stopped here.
Go ahead. I'll give you another 15 seconds, that's what you had.
Okay. I filed a lawsuit and petition for mandamus to have the queer flag removed from City Hall. Why, for one, there is no legal authorization to play at 16 PACS, 161 Select, Section 16127 states, that shall be unlawful to display the flag of any, it'll be lawful, it shall be lawful to display the flag of any country, city, borough, other municipality in the Commonwealth or the official POWMI...
Your time has expired, thank you.
On a public building or any grounds. The queer flag is not authorized to be a public display. I am, I'm done.
We have another outburst. I will clear the entire galley.
Mr. Smurl?
Please, you're finished, you're finished. You are finished, thank you.
All right, but as far as this group goes...
Connor McWiggen?
Hi, my name is Connor McWiggen, 933 Clay Avenue. I feel like Jackie Mason following the Beatles on Ed Sullivan right now. Hi, yes, I'm actually, yeah, we know, we know what he says, we know he's up here every week, we know he just memorizes the stuff he hears on the TV and the webpage, and I'm, he's gonna say that. And I really do appreciate your apologies, Mr. King and Mr. Smurl, doing that, I really, really, really do. I think when you have comments like this and other... I think when you have comments like this and other feelings like that and everything you just saw, and I think we know this, it's fear-based, they're very scared, this all comes from fear, which turns into anger, which turns into lashing out. And, you know, they just, that's gonna happen, I know we can't change that, but again, I thank you for your comments in the beginning, I really do. I think that's the first step, though, because I have something in common with four of you up there, I'm a straight, white, middle-aged man, right? And I think that is, it's easy for us, it's easy in a lot of situations that a lot of this crowd doesn't have. And I know I have been in situations where I take that second to be like, should I do something? And it's tough, because it's like, well, what are the other straight white guys doing? Not that you're looking at, but it's just something in our psyche, we do this, we take a moment, instead of leaping right at me, like, that's not right, that's not right. And I think what we need to do as straight people in this city, because this city is great, and it does care about its queer community, it's not all the loud people, and I know you guys agree with me, and I just think we have to do better as straight people in this city when we see something like that happen. There are a lot of trans people I know that have terrible things said to them, and I mean, that's just not Scranton, that's the world, unfortunately, but Scranton can rise up from that, right? We've got some great community here, we've got great events, and I know the mayor, the flag, it's tremendous, we just have to make sure when this happens, we don't wait a week for the apology, right? And I know you spoke up, but maybe, you know, just get in there, I know there's decorum, but that is just something, right? And you guys know it, it just can't happen, I know you're with me, we just gotta do better, all right? Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Jessica McWiggen?
Did you agree with that question? I did, I'm trying to see. Hi, everyone, my name is Jessica McWiggen, also 933 Clay Avenue. President Smurl, I also want to thank you for your thoughtful remarks at the beginning. When we make mistakes, when we don't do what we're supposed to, it takes a big person to think critically about their role in that, and I really heard you thinking critically, and I appreciate that. I've chosen Scranton as my home for nearly 20 years. I'm here tonight, not just as a citizen, but as someone who deeply believes in the city's capacity to be better than what we witnessed at the last council meeting. Speaking here tonight is not easy for me, sometimes it feels safer to stay quiet, but I have learned that we have the ability to speak up and to not, and to choose not to. We're just making space for the harm to continue when we make that second choice. So I'm here, despite my discomfort, because what happened at the last council meeting deserves more than silence. When someone stands at this podium and spews dehumanizing rhetoric, and it's met with a "thank you" or no response at all, it sends a message, a message that hate has a place here. Silence is not neutrality, it comes off as complicity. We are living in a moment where lines are being drawn across the country, in our own backyards, and the fear, the rhetoric of fear, division, and dehumanization is not abstract. It's being written into laws, spoken from pulpits, and shouted at school board meetings, and some people in power are targeting the most vulnerable among us, using fear as a political tool. And every time a local body, and subsequently a community like this one, shrugs it off or stays quiet, it echoes louder. The truth is, some opinions are dangerous, they cost people their dignity, and sometimes that leads to costing people their lives. We've seen this before. History shows us that what happens when communities choose silence is rarely good. During the civil rights movement, the Holocaust, the AIDS crisis, there are always people who said nothing while other people suffered. And there were others who chose courage over comfort, who stood up. Moments like this aren't new, but they are defining. During the civil rights movement, people had the choice to march with Dr. King or to stay on the sidewalk and say it wasn't their fight. During the Holocaust, there were people who turned on their neighbors and people who hid them. In every era, there's a moment when communities must decide whether they will stand against hate or be swallowed by it. This is ours. I don't come here only with grief and criticism, I come with hope, because I know Scranton can choose differently. We've seen it before. This is the same city that has uplifted immigrants and created spaces for interfaith communities, racial justice, and LGBTQIA+ visibility. It's the same city that boasts a rich labor history, born from solidarity and collective action. That's who we really are. So I am pleading with you tonight, not just as a constituent, but as a fellow human being. Do not let this moment pass in silence. Continue to condemn the hate that was spoken here, and more importantly, counter it with action, with love, and with policies that make this city safe for everyone. Let this be a city that shows up and refuses to pretend that bigotry is just a difference of opinion. Let's not be remembered for what we tolerated, let's be remembered for what we refused to accept. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McWiggen. I want to explain something. From day one, when I began council, when I thank someone, it's almost like that is my way of interrupting them and stopping them to let them know their time is up. I have done that from day one, and it's become a habit. So I think everybody's become accustomed to that, maybe I should just say, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, well, I should, thank you. Ron Elman?
Just to be courteous, but you have to thank everyone. Good evening, council. I think you threw out the wrong person personally. It's outrageous what was said back there by that man, and he's, he wasn't asked to leave. It's just a great sadness to see what's happening all over the country, not just in Los Angeles. As you know, I spent a quarter of my young life out there. I see all these things that are familiar, these neighborhoods and so forth. It's very sad for America. You know, Joe Biden's army of illegal disease filth has just destroyed America, being allowed to destroy America. And right here in this very city, one of his staunchest, just his strongest supporter of him and his policies, our mayor. If anything, that ought to be a reason to think before you vote. You know, the trouble is, you got people coming up here and in the paper that don't know what they're talking about. You got people that's never suffered the indignities of waiting in the food line like I have when our house burned down years ago, of not being able to make your rent or your mortgage taxes. There's thousands of people out there right now, low-income, nobody in this city, there's no help. I told you a couple weeks ago, there's no place for people to turn to in this city when you have all these problems. A microwave can mess up somebody's finances. We had to buy a refrigerator about a month ago, I wasn't expecting, it was ice cold one day and quit the next. It's, it's just so hard, and you people sitting here have never suffered any of these indignities. You can't imagine what it's like, I wasn't in the line when Sister Adrienne gave away the food, but I saw it, it must have been a mile long going past the stadium, and I talked to people who's lost everything, their business, their jobs, where they lived, and here, court right, is giving $10 million to the eight colleges while people, those very people that paid taxes were suffering. You know? It's this unfair world we live in, I guess. You know, my car got towed in the very day I drove it, because my neighbor said it was abandoned, my Cadillac. Every day I pass a car, the 1400 Block North Main, that got the street, the sidewalk completely blocked where people are walking in the street. Nobody seems to care about that car. I got tickets for not cutting my grass from the city. It was wet, you know, everybody's grass looked like mine, but I got, well, they have gotten off my back, I'll say that. The code enforcement hasn't given me any tickets or nothing for a year or more. But this, the future of this city is so important, and people coming out of the woodwork that never had nothing to do with the whole city or anything, library, nothing, want your vote. They're not qualified. And the mayor has a war chest that nobody can compete with. When you take all these contributions, you're obligated. That's why Bassaluga and WNEP are...
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Pay a fraction of their taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Elman, thank you. Connor O'Brien?
Did you do 1400 Block North Main for that? Good evening, council, my name is Connor Kelly O'Brien, I live at 816 Wheeler Avenue. I had some remarks written to deliver tonight, and I'm going to get to as much of them as I possibly can, but the different comments this evening have resonated with me in a way that I just, I want to shift my remarks to council briefly and adjust them ever so slightly. I come from, I was born and raised here in Scranton, Pennsylvania, in the Hill section. I've lived here my whole life, with the exception of a few years when I moved to New York, or have traveled for work. I attended Scranton High School, I went right into the working force, the nonprofit arts world, right out of high school. I am not a college graduate, that's not speaking ill against college, it just wasn't in my cards in my family's financial situation at that time. I understand, and I am not going to begin to compare my situation to the gentleman before me or anyone that has spoken here tonight, because I can't, because you don't know the complexity of every single person's life. You don't understand what it's like to walk a mile in their shoes, even if you grew up with them in the same neighborhood of Scranton in the 90s or the 2000s. It's just not possible, it's the complexity of humanity. It's the core thing that every person tonight that I agree with or fundamentally disagree with here has been expressing, which is that somehow individuals that want to promote hateful rhetoric, put down those that have had a different life experience than them, somehow feel that they are the one that is unheard, that they are the one that is not being listened to or appreciated or respected. And there's an individual here tonight that I don't need to mention by name, that it was cited, has done tons of work for charity. That's fantastic, I applaud that individual's charitable efforts. It does not negate, you know, who we are on our day-to-day is what we will be remembered by and honored by, or taken into account depending on your belief in the divine afterlife. It does not matter, Democrat, Republican, it does not matter what cult of personality you choose to follow, Biden, Trump. We are, for the most part, all members of a working-class, rust-belt, while reviving and beautiful city, community. It does not mean, if you are not queer, and we've had the conversation, there's been conversations related to this moment and the last week's council remarks of straight privilege, and what it means to be queer and oppressed. Stating for the record that has been said by others far smarter than me 100 million times over, it does not mean, if you are a straight, white, cisgendered individual, it does not mean that you have not gone against oppression, it does not mean that you have not faced hardship and struggles and worked hard, it simply means that your gender and/or sexual identity has never been one of them. I'm going to revert back to my far better written remarks than my improvisation here. I didn't even want to cite last week's incident, what I wanted to do, what I think would speak louder volumes than simply me conveying any frustration I could, is leave you with some statistics. And the reason that, not personally, but as a human being, as a member of Scranton, I'm the director of the Scranton Fringe Festival, that was, I got a wonderful shout-out earlier, very grateful for that, but that, you know, I work with a lot of youth in the region as a teaching artist, et cetera, have all my credentials, have all my backgrounds. Suicide is the second-leasing cause of death among youth ages 10 to 14, and this is in this country, not worldwide, and the third amongst those 15 to 24. LGBTQ youth are at significantly higher risk. In fact, youth who identify as straight attempt suicide at a rate of 6%. Those gay or lesbian who identify as such at a rate of 19%. It is estimated that more than 1.8 million LGBTQ youth, uh, Q, young people, excuse me, seriously consider suicide each year in this country. That's one every 45 seconds, that's five since I have began speaking at this platform. What we say matters, what we say echoes out and has significance, even in Scranton, Pennsylvania. I didn't get to get to half of what I wanted to comment, I'll leave this with, I would like to thank President Smurl for your remarks in the beginning. There's no amount of money that would ever want me to have any of your jobs up there, so I'm incredibly grateful for your kindness, your compassion, and your transparency. I would not want to be judged by a bad day myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, Les Spindler, City Resident. I, for one, I'm going to defend Bob a little bit. I read that article that Chris Kelly put in the paper on Sunday, and he said Bob was wrong all the time, and this and that, and he cited that Bob went against council rules. Well, I stated here before, the United States Constitution does not supersede council rules. And we tried, Judy Cattelli tried to stifle us here years ago, the ACLU came in, and they said council rules do not supersede the constitutions, the other way around. So, anyway, Bob said, you know, he didn't like the pride flag being raised, because he gave the Ukrainian flag and Israeli flag to our mayor, and our mayor refused to raise them. And I said that a long time ago. This mayor shall raise any flag, doesn't matter what kind it is, but when she was giving the Ukrainian flag and Israeli flag to raise, she wouldn't do it. And she told me, I asked her, she said, "Oh, it might cause a problem." Well, you know what? That's a slap on the face to Ukraine, it's a slap on the face to Israel. And I'm a Jewish person, and I told our rabbi and our cantor that she wouldn't raise that flag of Israel, and they were pretty upset about it. So, Chris Kelly, he's wrong most of the time, because years ago when Chris Dougherty was mayor, I was part of a group that came here every Tuesday, and we defended the police union and the firemen union who Chris Dougherty tried to break. And Chris Kelly would never say a bad word about Chris Dougherty, and he called us that came, the Legion of Doom. Well, all we did was support our firefighters and police officers. We came here week after week, and he said we were wrong, but we ended up being right, because Chris Dougherty cost this city $40 million on the court case, actually it was $80 million, but our unions were nice enough to take half of the, what they were, agreed that the city should pay them. So Chris Kelly doesn't know what he's talking about, all he does is follow what the Times tells him to print. And we were right, he was wrong, the Legion of Doom was right, every week we came here and talked. Every week we came here and talked. And I wish, I wish I still had my shirt. I wanted to wear it tonight, but I couldn't find it. Because we stuck up for our first responders. Next thing. On the news last Friday, Representative Kyle Mullins spoke. His dad died of ALS, which is also Lou Gehrig's disease. But the idiot in the White House cut funding for, uh, for new gen, new neurodegenerative diseases, which ALS is one of, along with Alzheimer's and others. Representative Mullins sponsored a bill for state funding for research on the terrible diseases. This hits home for me because I lost my grandmother, my mother, to Alzheimer's, and I have a brother who's right now in a nursing home with the beginning of it. So, Donald Trump only cares about himself. He doesn't care about poor people or people that are sick or whatever, and he's cutting everything. But to cut funding, to try to get a cure for terrible diseases like this, that's inconscionable. How anybody could support this man, it's, it just blows my mind. Another thing. Last week I spoke about MAC signs, putting up signs and selling them.
I got a response in the fifth order for that.
Oh, okay. Good.
I brought it up.
Because I was wondering if anybody up there thought that was right. First of all, we're paying them, and then they're selling the signs to make more money, and they're taking work away from our DPW. And I'm surprised our DPW doesn't file a grievance on that. I can't believe they're not doing that. Because they're losing work, and we're paying MAC signs, and they're also selling the signs. That, that shouldn't be legal. Lastly, I spoke about this last week. Where I live in Tripp Park, it's unbelievable, the heavy equipment going by my house every day that are killing our streets. And like I said, I hope the gas company is going to pave all these roads that they're digging up. Maybe they have to put these lines in, but I hope they fix up the streets because they're making a mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. If you'd just state your name so if I didn't get it correct.
No worries. You did great. Good evening. My name is Levi LaRouche. I am a resident of Scranton. And I'm really here today to tell you how proud I am to be a resident of Scranton. I worked incredibly hard to get here. I come from a town of 143 people. And I knew when it was time for me to choose a place to set down roots and build a life and a family, that it needed to be a place that enshrined protections for myself and my community into law. Not only that, but Scranton has such a beautiful history of diversity, inclusion, and citizen action that I've really admired in a city. I spent two and a half years house hunting here before choosing to rent because I couldn't spend another day not living in a city that I absolutely love. That said, I do think that all residents deserve to feel safe and supported while making public comments on things that affect our city. And I, I do appreciate the apology that was given and the commitment to ensuring that that happens in the future. However, I will say that an apology without action behind it is just words. So, I'm here today to join other members of the LGBT community to ask you to continue pushing for advanced protections for the LGBT community in Scranton. That includes explicit protections for the transgender community, who have been inappropriately and unfairly called out on a national stage this year and are currently feeling unsafe regardless of where they live. I will also say that some other cities in our region, Allentown and Easton most recently, have pushed for safe city ordinances and resolutions that will continue to protect our community. I think that would be a wonderful point of action to back up your promises. I also wanted to mention that despite our community's attempts to reclaim it, the term queer is still being used as a slur, as evidenced by previous comments tonight and last week. I understand, as many of you are not part of the community, perhaps your ears are not attuned to hearing it in that way. However, when a resident goes on to call the LGBT community the scum of the city, that should maybe be an indicator there. As a resident of Scranton who chose to be here and loves to be here and has also had insults and slurs thrown at me in the streets, has been threatened to be hit by cars by other residents just for being, daring to walk out in the daylight with my partner, it is imperative that the city continues to protect its LGBTQ residents and continue to stand behind those ordinances that are already law here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I want to start off with thanking Jerry for his introspection that he was able to show. I think that having leaders that show that sort of introspection after they've been confronted is something that we sorely lack in a lot of leaders. So, I want to commend you for, you know, speaking with your friends, family, and coming to a realization. Too often, we close back into our own shells when people confront us. And yeah, as was previously mentioned, I'm also a cisstraight guy. You know, I don't have to worry about, like many people on this council, being harassed or attacked on the basis of my gender, my sexuality, whether or not I'm trans. This is something that we take as, you know, we take for granted. And to be able to, you know, I just want to commend that. I appreciate Bill King's comments as well. I think that we need folks to, you know, stand not only for their convictions, but for folks in their communities. You know, first and foremost, you're representatives. You represent your constituents, and you have to keep, make sure that every one of us are safe. You know, whether we're trans, whether we're gay, or whether we're an immigrant. I think this also ties back in to just the explosion of hate that I think Jerry opened the meeting with, that comes down from the national politics. Something else that's been happening recently in our neighborhoods and city is that ICE are going and picking up folks. Recently, just the other day, they, as much as they don't want to say it's ICE, it's not ICE, it's Homeland Security Investigations. It's two Ps in a pod. HSI had done a raid just the other day in Exeter where they had detained an undocumented immigrant from our community. There's been a lot of reporting, basically the same information from the local press, but it's really funny to see their biases come out when reading these articles. Some folks will refer to them as illegals, which no human is illegal, and you especially can't be illegal on stolen land. Pennsylvania, ever since Isaac Tripp, the first settler, came to the region, we have basically eradicated the native population. There's not a single reservation in the state of Pennsylvania. So, I want to echo Angela, and I really believe that we need to do more to show that we are a welcoming city. An ordinance similar to Easton, Allentown, Lancaster State College, all within about the last year or so, had passed these types of ordinances. But I think that we also need to go further and declare Scranton a sanctuary city. A lot of people are afraid by that term, but what it allows is that for folks that are undocumented to be able to reach out to law enforcement, that if there are issues, that they don't have to be afraid that they're going to be turned over to immigration and custom enforcement. So, by allowing folks that don't have documented status to be able to call and, you know, report a crime or report that there's been a crime against them is of utmost importance to maintaining public safety. Otherwise, you're going to have a section of our community that is not going to be able to call and interfaith, interact with law enforcement. This is the biggest reason why sanctuary cities work and why it's so important for Again, so along with the access to better medical resources for trans folks, I believe a welcoming city should also go and clearly delineate Scranton as a sanctuary city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Holly Ord. I am a Scranton resident and local organizer for NEPA Stands Up. Like most of the folks here tonight, I was extremely disappointed in what took place last week, seeing my friend, a strong and courageous leader in this community, harassed and intimidated on a public forum. I would like to thank council for their earlier comments and commitment to equally enforcing the council rules going forward. It is council's responsibility to protect everybody in this city and to create a welcoming and safe atmosphere that all people can share in without fear of harassment or intimidation. I would also like to echo Angela's urging to strengthen the protections of our city's non-discrimination ordinance. Scranton is a place where everybody belongs. I love this city. I was born here and raised here and have made the decision to make my life here. When I am asked why I love Scranton, and I am a lot, I always say the same thing. Scranton is a hopeful place. The Electric City sign, I love it. I don't know about you. I love that sign. It is a beacon of hope. And I am a deeply hopeful person. And this room today gives me so much hope. What is deeply heartening about this situation that we find ourselves in here today is the fact that so many members of our great community are here today. When someone is attacked, our community shows up. You show up.
Amy, would please address council? Thank you.
They show up! And it's amazing, and it's beautiful, and it really shows why everybody here belongs. We belong here. We are a community. And I am really hopeful for the future of city council, for the equal enforcement of the rules where everybody feels that they have the right and the opportunity to voice their opinion here. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Anthony Botman. I'm from Scranton. And I had some prepared remarks, but there's a lot of more smart people in here than I am that can speak more succinctly on these issues. But I'm just going to get here and talk about a, just give a personal testimony. I'm from Scranton. I was raised in Scranton. Whether I like to admit it or not, Scranton is my home. And I feel, as the city being my home, that we should be inviting and welcoming other people into our home. This home shouldn't be closed off. The doors shouldn't be locked. The windows shouldn't be bordered. We should be inviting everyone. The LGBTQ community should feel welcomed here. We need to let that be known. We need to invite everyone into our home. And I want to thank you, council, for actually apologizing for the miscarriage of justice that I saw last week, actually. And I do appreciate the words, but I do want to stress that those are words, and we do expect action. And I just want to echo what everyone else here has said. And we should be a safe city. We should be a safe haven. We should be a sanctuary. We shouldn't have ICE coming in here, taking our people off the streets. It shouldn't be happening. We should all be protecting each other. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Joel, yours says 326 North Apple Street, sir?
Yes.
Is that Dunmore?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you're not allowed to speak. I'm sorry?
I moved from North Main Avenue.
Yeah, but you're not a resident of the city of Scranton today, are you?
I've paid taxes here.
I, but are you a resident, sir?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Anthony Farah.
I'm sorry. You couldn't spell it for me?
F-A-R-A-H. Sorry.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you for not throwing me out earlier. I was just disturbed by the comments that Bolusson made last week and felt an overwhelming feeling, the voice of the injustices that he was speaking. I moved into this area in 2010. I found it to be welcoming, and I, I find it disturbing that people have grown up here since they were younger, that they don't feel the same security and welcoming presence in this community. My friends and comrades here have spoken a lot more succinctly and clearly, but I just feel that if, there's a lot of performative actions that the Scranton City Council has done as far as raising flags up, putting all gender bathrooms in the city council, but there needs to be action. There needs to be material change that directly supports our trans community so that they feel safe. The whole point of Bolusson's comments is to scare our trans community. You know, this is not just some one, one person's action. This is, he's reflective of what this government is doing that's in the White House. They want people scared. They want people afraid. They want people to hide in their homes. I have friends that are, are just walking down the street being verbally assaulted as a car drives by. They don't feel comfortable in our streets. We need to stand up. We need to pass ordinances that protect our friends and our community members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Rick Little, Scranton. Couple of weeks ago, I talked about this headline, "Police Homeless Man Attacks Hospital Staff." And it really hit me because the guy was put in jail by the same judge, the same magistrate that evicted me twice, which I appealed twice. Anyway, I'm homeless, I'm old, and I couldn't think I'm a victim just walking down the street. I have to walk in the street. I can't walk on the sidewalk. There's too many cracks. One fall, and I'm out of the game. I'm non-implicatory. And I've broken my wrist six times since I've been in Scranton. Now, the thing I handed out to you, there's a lot of talk about LGBTQ, and this is a big issue. I like, I love that community in, during AIDS, the people that worked in ACT UP were my brothers. I mean, they gave me fake police passes. They allowed me to do my journalistic stuff. You know, these were people, you know, Jackie Curtis, Jim Farot, people that were at Stonewall. And And there's a nostalgia about all that stuff. But here's the thing. It starts with the education in schools where people are being not taught the right stuff. They're not taught they're civics, but they are taught that, you know, they have equality. And that comes from 1871, equality and equal. And that's a long time ago. And we've been going under merit time law. And the biggest problem here is the media and the judiciary. And that goes right up to the top because America has been under attack for a long time by literal Nazis since after the war. Operation Paperclip, we let Nazis take over our government. That's who ran Nassau. That's, who are still running a lot of things. I believe my country would be gone if President Trump did not get elected because I've been, I've been educated about this all my life, about the rule of law. And the problem is we don't know the chain of command. So when something's wrong, you don't know where to go. I come here, you know, I wanted to speak to one of the commissioners. Now there's only two commissioners. Where do you go? You know, I lived at Scranton Housing Authority. They confiscated my stuff for two and a half years before they called the sheriff and kicked me out. I lost almost all my worldly possessions, my library, that's a big thing, you know, but I make do with it. That's what you have to do. And so, on a positive note, the thing I handed out to you, this is a legislative body and I want to get into like making legislation and I, you know, and there's all this talk about the LGBTQ flag on the flagpole. I've seen BLM flags there. I've seen United Nations flags there, which I consider a communist flag. And like BLM, when I first heard BLM, I'm thinking Bureau of Land Management, where Hillary Clinton sold 20% of our uranium to a Canadian corporation who sold it to Russia. There's a lot of stuff going on. And we look at Los Angeles now, that's one of the media things, you know? We look at the history of, you know, the felon versus the prosecutor, of them, you know, criminalizing people. They have criminalized old people here and they've criminalized disabled people. And Corey McNulty, from that headline that I started out with, you know, he's going through the system. There's no reason he should have been in jail for two months. They tied the guy up and he got mad and spit at him. And now he's facing felonies and it's going through the court. If anybody knows Corey McNulty, please have them get in touch with me. Thank you.
Thank you.
What?
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Oh, okay. Well.
That's all for our sign and sheet. Does anybody else wish to address council?
I'm gonna try to take it easy this time because I know you guys know, you know, how I used to be and all of that. Aunt Marquis, activist, musician, whatever you want to call me. I really just came up here to say, if you guys, I'm trying not to address the council, the people back here and talk to you guys, but if anyone wants to, you know, if anyone cares about the city of Scranton or Lackawanna County, then I think it would be wiser if we stop attacking one another and we come together and we unite and we organize for this county. Because, you know, all the back and forth and coming at each other's necks and all of that stuff, this is embarrassing. Like, imagine if you were from another county and you're watching this on television. What would you think about Lackawanna County if you see this all day? There is no unity within our county. It's just division, division, division. And, you know, I'm sick of it, but I don't want to make it about me because this is about the solution, the bottom line. The bottom line is that we come together, we unite, and we organize.
Anthony.
Yes, sir.
You're getting so loud tonight. Yeah, but it's blurring now.
I'm sorry. I'm getting passionate. I'm sorry, sir. I got 3:45 left. I got 3 minutes 44 seconds left.
But Lord, so it doesn't echo, so I can hear you.
I just got a strong voice. I can't help it. So all I'm saying is that we need to come together and organize, unify and organize, not diss one another, not disrespect each other and all of that because we're all under the same umbrella, which is Lackawanna County. And, you know, outside of that, we're all under the same umbrella, which is the United States of America. No matter if you're Republican, if you're Democrat, it doesn't matter what party you are. So we have to learn how to start being a little bit more diplomatic and talking to one another instead of attacking one another because it's all for the common good, excuse me, it's all for the common good of our counties, of our cities, and of this nation essentially. And that's all I want to say. Aunt Marquis, oh yeah, and I just became Republican last night. The interview's dropping soon with, what is it? Citizens Voice. So I'm gonna leave it there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Tom Coymanuka. First of all, you had mentioned that no one should be intimidated in this chamber. I guess maybe then you should be talking to the city law department about serving me here in this body, in this very chambers, five minutes before the session started. Maybe it should have been done outside the chambers as this, if this chamber is not a place for intimidation. Now, as the Times Tribune did a story on the data breach, the headline stated a generic nondescription, a Scranton-based nonprofit addiction treatment organization. You had to read the article where it identified the body as the Drug and Alcohol Treatment Service of 441 Wyoming Avenue. Most of the news sources immediately had the headline that the Drug and Alcohol Treatment Services had a data breach, noting the name in the headline and not a generic Scranton-based nonprofit. After learning of it in October, there was an internal investigation that took six months. After it was done, they reported it six months after the fact to a governmental agency. Still had not notified anyone affected for almost seven months. How could an agency be so reckless? I mean, it's like leaving employee files in an alleyway and then six months later saying nothing had happened, no one was exposed, and whitewashing it while the people exposed were not informed. A truly shocking thing. Moving on, flooding in the Fawnwood area. The mayor's response was, "The city has been working on several flood mitigation projects for the past two years and should be able to break ground soon." It was said, "We're down here on Maryfield right now where DPW is almost done clearing out the ponds here at the pump station. We've got activity in our usual hotspots." If you have supposedly been working on it for two years but not broke ground, you haven't been working on it. I know preventive action is often more beneficial than reactive. Why are we clearing the pump stations after the fact? Are they failing? Are they inadequate? And why haven't we put stop cards in place until the rest of the issue is resolved? That being said, moving on to Lackawanna Avenue. There's a lot of talk about it. I remember with the walkability study at Central High School, it was stated that the Lackawanna Street was not funded, not part of the ARPA project, and they hoped to get more funds and grants to include Lackawanna Avenue in the project. So unless we've received a mystery grant from unknown sources and something has changed, the Make City Hall and the Courthouse Beautiful ARPA projects have zero funding for Lackawanna Avenue. Moving on, years ago, we were told under Bill Gohn that Aztec Decking, a part of the Aztec company that was in Menucha, would be supplying plastic wood materials to fix the rotting wood structures in Naog Park. Did we do nothing for so long that we missed the opportunity for those donations because I haven't seen any of this wonderful donated plastic decking anywhere up at Naog Park? Last, I asked what legislation last week has this body brought forth? Not just waited for the administration to present it. I remember the fiasco of giving the crossing guards $10 a day, split between the city and the school boards, $5 each, a 50% reduction from the $20 that was asked. What legislation have any of you in this body sponsored and introduced yourself?
If anybody wishes to answer, they think you did it in fifth order.
Okay. And I will wait here for my entire time for your answer.
Okay.
Because in fifth order, you dodge it. And in truth, I understand you don't have to answer. And you won't. That's why dodging it to fifth order. The Sunshine Act allows me to ask and you don't have to respond. But they say you should respond because it's a responsibility and clarity. But I understand you don't want clarity when you do nothing. Good night.
Good evening, Councilvergele Argentus, Scranton. Mr. Smurl, thank you for your leadership. I am profoundly concerned about the derogatory remarks made last week towards the resident addressing council, as well as members of the LGBTQ+ community and the celebration of Pride Month. It is essential to uphold respect and support for these individuals, many whom are family, friends, and loved ones, rather than exhibiting hostility and discrimination. The remarks made by this individual do not represent the values, beliefs, or sentiments of many residents in our community. Diversity is important to our community and it is essential to avoid divisive speech. Such rhetoric can only divide people and affect the principles of equality that are important to all of us. As a community leader, as community leaders, I urge you to take a firm stance against hateful speech and reaffirm our city's commitment to supporting the LGBTQ+ community. Hate should have no place in our city, and I hope council will lead by example as elected officials in fostering a welcoming environment for all. Mr. Council President, you may want to have a button installed so that you may cut off and silence microphones from anybody that you do want speaking out of line. On June 4th, I attended a zoning hearing where a local business owner requested permission to use a private parking lot. He had been denied permission to shut down the street in front of his business for a music festival from June 12th to June 15th because he did not provide a one-year notice to the city of Scranton. On June 6th, the 100 block of Wyoming Avenue was closed to traffic from Spruce Street to Lackawanna Avenue. The previous weekend, Vine Street in front of the Scranton Public Library was also closed for Swinging on Vine event. Throughout the year, there are numerous races and festivals. Additionally, St. Peter's Cathedral holds funerals throughout the year where the street is shut down. Are all these events planned a year in advance? The council may wish to review and investigate this rule to ensure that it's practical. We should encourage and support any business wanting to come to town and contribute to our local economy. You recall the Kapow Street Pool Splash Pad Project? The old saying, "The third time is the charm," seems to be applicable here as once again, the winning bidder was the highest bidder. This time, it was just for site preparation. For public awareness, over $1 million of taxpayers' money has been wasted by circumventing the business process between the Naog Pool Project, the Novemberino Splash Pad Project, and the Kapow Avenue Splash Pad Project. So to award the contract to the highest bidder needs to be investigated. This matter has been brought to your attention several times over the last year before, and you may want to further investigate by council. Last week, I presented a list of issues. Will you be preparing any answers in fifth order? And if I may, I'm coming in tonight. The five of Lackawanna and the Scranton Electric Building, there's a huge piece of copper flashing that's ready to blow off. It may be pretty dangerous. Can you address that? Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And, you know, after I left council last week, it was a very disturbing week to go over what was said here in council last week. And it is concerning because I've become afraid. I'm concerned about my own safety. As a black female, I'm concerned. So with the talk and everything against the LGBTQ community, am I next? Doris and I talked, is Doris next? Who's next with all the rhetoric and the hatred and all? So I have to thank President Smurl for the letter and for reading the announcement because it concerned me last week after I got home that, you know, that you didn't say anything. And then I thought about it, we've had conversations about our First Amendment rights. And I did look up the First Amendment rights and to see exactly what does the First Amendment rights really say and how does it apply to me as a citizen of Scranton. And I could not come up with any definite answer, but I do know that I feel insecure at times. I feel afraid. As Mr. Bolus said up here, he doesn't think anyone is afraid. Oh, yes, they are. I am, and I know that others of my ethnicity are afraid as well. When you drive down the street, this is 2025, and I could have someone yell out the window the N-word. This is 2025. So I can just imagine that the words that are spewed out of car windows, because I always think that person is very insecure because they wouldn't say that to my face. But as they're driving down the street or to give me the finger for no reason, they don't even know me. And if they took the time to know me, then they would realize that they, we would have a lot in common with each other. So I thank the community for showing up tonight. It's been a long time since we've had so many members at council here and voicing their opinions and all, and I appreciate that. But I just wanted to know, it's not just the community that's here tonight. It's also any other community that's different than what you are becomes a target, which is not right. So for Mr. Bolus, who says I'm not, you know, there's no one's afraid, yes, they are. You know, I have to be afraid sometimes. I've got two sons. They're black, they're tall, they're big, and they have to always be mindful. My husband, their father, always told them, "You can't do this, you can't do that because they're black, because they'll be pulled over or this." And one's a businessman, he has his own business. My second son is, has a big job as well. They're both very successful, but they always are mindful of the color of their skin and just how big they are. So I say all that because there's a lot of hatred, a lot of ill things that are being said and done. And we all have to look at ourselves. Look at yourself as to what you're saying, what you're thinking, and try to make it a better place. Try to do all that you can do to make it a better place here in Scranton as well as across the country. Thank you. Oh, let me say one more thing. You know, I almost forgot. The flower show is coming, you know, June 21st. The flower show will be up at Naog Park and we're busy getting ready for everything. So, you know, we can plan, we can plan, we can plan, but we can't do anything about the weather. So all this rain that we've been having, you know, we're saying our prayers, we'll have a good day. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Annie Kuhlbaum and I am a resident of Scranton. I just wanted to read some words from a friend. Last week, a speaker stood at this podium and used their time not to uplift this community, not to advance the public good, but to demean the entire queer community and directly harass a member of the audience. They violated your own rules. I would refer you to Article 5, Section 1, Paragraph 2 of the Rules of Council, which prohibits personal attacks on individuals during the public comment, including those based on gender identity or sexuality. After that, the speaker then launched into a tirade about how the pride flag hanging outside this chamber disgusts them. Let me be very clear, that was not free speech. This was targeted hate speech, the kind designed to intimidate, humiliate, and isolate. And it was allowed to unfold uninterrupted in what is supposed to be a protected - And it was allowed to unfold uninterrupted in what is supposed to be a protected civic space. And to make matters worse, it was done by someone with public influence, wealth, and power, who used their time here to punch down at someone and claim that queer people do not deserve respect nor have a legacy worth celebrating. When someone claims that queer people don't deserve representation or respect, that's not just bigoted ignorance, it's an attempt to erase us from public life. And when this kind of hatred is permitted to be spewed forth unchallenged, it sends the message that this kind of dehumanization is tolerated, that this chamber is not, in fact, for all of us. When I hear that queer people haven't bled for this country, I think about the countless LGBTQIA+ service members who fought and died for our military in silence, shame, and fear. I think about the queer people who marched for civil rights, who protested, who were beaten or killed so that one day we might simply live more free. Queer people have taught in schools, they've given you and your loved ones medical care, built your arts programs, volunteered in your parks, and helped run your elections. We have done all of that while being told that we don't belong. Yet, we still persist. We have always been part of the fabric of this country, of the city of Scranton, of this very room. And to deny that is not only historically and categorically false, it is morally shameful. Council members, your rules prohibit personal attacks from this podium, and yet you let one happen anyway. Make no mistake, this was just, not just an attack on one person, but an attack on the queer community at large. I commend Dr. Rothschild for addressing the matter afterwards and acknowledging that she was understandably stunned by the display, and I commend the other members as well. But the silence from, at the time, it spoke volumes. It was a sign that people like us, people like the person who was humiliated, should simply sit there and endure it, that we are not worth defending or speaking up for. So I'm here to ask council, all of you, to do better, to uphold your own rules, make it absolutely clear that public comment is not a license to abuse people. The First Amendment is not a license to abuse people. Queer residents deserve safety and dignity in their own city hall. I would like to remind everyone that the pride flag is not in competition with the American flag, it is meant to complement it. The more we shame people for flying the pride flag, the more we shame and tarnish the values that the American flag itself is supposed to represent. Scranton deserves better from our council. Thank you. Happy Pride Month.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. I hadn't planned on speaking, and I'll...
Say your name again.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is David Danielowski. I'm a lifelong resident of Scranton. I live in Southside, grew up in Southside. Hearing about what transpired last week was, to say the least, shocking and appalling. I appreciate your comments. Mr. Smurl, Mr. King, I really appreciate your apology and your, I look forward, as I know everyone else looks forward to your action, to show that those words will be met with action. As someone who has friends and family in this community, it is so important that not only just in city council meetings, but walking down the street on a day-to-day basis, feel like they do not have to look over their shoulder. That is just something that we, as American citizens, all deserve, regardless of any sexual orientation, gender identity, race, religion. And while some people come up here into this podium this evening and will state that they have the right to free speech, as long as your free speech doesn't incite hateful behavior, then 100% you have that right. But when that crosses that line, I feel like that's where we, as a community, need to stand up and make sure that people like that understand the difference between First Amendment right and simple hatred. And I appreciate that so many people in the community have showed up. I think that in this time, our government locally, on a national level, is very, very on a thin, thin line, very thin ice. And I think that when we do show up like this, and when we do have people who will take accountability on every level, not just in the community, but also our elected officials, I think that's the type of change that we need going forward, and that's the type of things that need to continue to happen in order for things to not just stay the same and get better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
I have comments. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming here this evening. I think this is fantastic. As I said last week, this place should be open to everyone. And everyone's here, there's a lot of people here, there's a lot of diversity in this room, and diversity is what makes not only our city great, but our country great. I do have to apologize, I did defend, or last week, I defended all of you and your community, but I should have done it sooner. One of the reasons why I didn't jump in in the middle of the hate speech is that I was the former president of council, and I was trying to respect the position of our president. So I sat there and was tortured, listening to all of that, like many, many of you, had to listen to it whether you were here or whether you were watching on YouTube. But I do apologize for not jumping in earlier. That's simply unacceptable. I was an educator, retired educator, not an agitator, an educator. Several of you were, some of my former students, who spoke tonight, and I was very proud of the way you spoke. This, these chambers, this city, this is, I am so proud of our city and brag about it all the time. Everywhere I go, the diversity is what makes it great. And when you think about how this, back in the 80s, when I was, after college, I came back here, there wasn't a lot to do in the city, and actually, there wasn't a lot of diversity in the city. In my many years, you know, in classrooms when I was a teacher and as a principal, and then later as a superintendent, I had the opportunity to see children of all, every gender, of every ethnic background, and I always tried to create an environment where everyone felt welcome, everyone was honored. All someone has to do is give somebody a chance, you know, take the opportunity to meet someone, learn about them a little bit. And why hate someone because of their sexuality, or their religion, or their color? I like, I like to base my understanding of people based on how I get to know them and talk to them. And typically, when I get to know people, I learn a lot more, and it broadens my, it broadens my perspective and understanding of life in general. So I applaud all of you for being here this evening. I'm hoping to work with this body to continue to make sure that we do the right things to ensure that everyone, everyone is welcome in this city, in these chambers, and we will work to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few comments and try to get into city business. Thank you all for coming tonight. I think all the opinions that we heard puts things into perspective. Well, I think what's been, sometimes things have to come to a head before they change, and I think what's been going on in these council chambers has been building up, and hopefully, it's come to this head right now so we could see some change here. You know, someone recently at the podium said, "It's not a license to attack." And I think maybe, if you've been watching over the last year, we've started, the attacks started with attacks on council members. So what may have started with concerns in the city went from concerns to attacks on council members and has built from there till we get to the point that we're at tonight. So I'm glad everybody came out. I hope it comes to this head so we can change what's going on in these chambers. So thank you. Over the weekend, we had a storm, and we had some water issues in several different parts of the city, East Mountain, West Mountain. So as we're approaching the spring and the rainy season, can we get an update on the Maryfield Pump House? I know, you know, if that pump house gets overwhelmed, the fire department comes out, and we do use the fire department pumps, but what are the city plans that we have when heavy rain's coming? And can we get updates on the water projects that are occurring in Kaiser Valley, East Mountain, North Scranton, and Tripp Park, and the water project also in Manuka, so we know where we're at timeline-wise on all of these projects?
I'll do that, sir.
Thank you. I did have some, some questions on some other addresses, but as the course of the week went, I did get some answers. 1405 Cherry Street is an Airbnb. It came before the zoning board recently. It was denied, but it appears that they may be operating again as an Airbnb, so could we please send that over to the city administration if they could take a look at that property as well?
We did that today, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. I had some questions about the Scranton Redevelopment Authority Director. How is this position being funded? Are we still using ARPA funds to fund the position? Have they been earmarked? And are they being reimbursed? We got some of the numbers back, it is ceded with ARPA money. We are being reimbursed, and the answer that I got back from last week was the SRA has an ARPA subrecipient agreement through December of 2026. So that position is going to be funded till December of 2026, and administration is an eligible expense through that agreement to be refunded. If it is possible, can we ask the administration if we could have the SRA director in to give us an update on what's going on with the redevelopment authority?
I'll reach out for a caucus.
Thank you very much. Also, there were some water problems on Yazoo Drive on East Mountain. I had asked some questions about runoff that was occurring there, and also about water testing at Mountain Lake. They did not ask, or they did not answer about water testing at Mountain Lake, but the answer that I got was city officials have been in communication with and have visited the resident on Yazoo Drive. That's the only communication we got on that. But can we ask again about water testing at Mountain Lake?
I'll ask that question again, sir.
Thank you very much. As more people are going to be using that lake, it'd be nice to know that we had testing done there. That's all for tonight, Mr. Smurl.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
I do, thank you. First, before I address all the speakers tonight, I, there was one person who had brought up some questions about legislation that has come from this body forward. He did ask about if we have sponsored legislation. We don't really go, we don't go through that process as they might in some other bodies, so we don't have like a sponsoring. And then when something is introduced in fifth order, it is automatically introduced by the president of council, not by an individual council member, but then someone can, can second it, and then we have various phases that that legislation will go through. One of the biggest standout legislations that, that did certainly come from this body came from me, was a conversion therapy ban ordinance a few years ago that we had passed unanimously as a council. And I'm very proud that I was able to help bring that to this council and to our city, and that we have that piece of legislation that is protecting LGBTQ youth from the harmful practice of conversion therapy. There's also been a number of ordinances that we have worked closely with the administration on, and we do that because, especially when we have ordinances that need, need to be enforced, we need to have the administration, the mayor onboard with, with that legislation so that we can ensure that it's effective and that it's, that it's undertaken, because we can pass laws, and then it's, it's up to her and the administration to then enforce them. So a couple of those ones that, that come to mind, that, you know, came from working together with them, was the rental registration ordinance. That was really big, that I was happy to be a part of, as well as pave-cut legislation that was passed just over the, the past year. So those are a few of the ones that come to mind. And then there was one that I was working on with Solicitor Hayes when he was our council solicitor, and that was a mural arts ordinance. That didn't end up coming to fruition because we were waiting on the city's arts committee to be developed and haven't revisited that. But there certainly is the power from this body to create that legislation and to pass it. So I did just want to respond to that and clarify that. Next, I just wanted to remark that over the six years that I've been a part of this council, there's been few moments that have been as powerful as this one has been for me tonight. So I appreciate all of you. I appreciate you being here. One of the things that comes to mind is, is when you attack one of us, you attack all of us, and that really shows in how the community has, has stood up tonight for a member of our community. And so I wanted to thank you to those who spoke out tonight or showed up. I wanted to thank you for your bravery, for your honesty. Thank you for showing that we will not be intimidated in these chambers. And I'm, I'm proud of Scranton, I'm proud to be a part of the LGBTQ community, I'm proud of my family, and I'm proud to be an LGBTQ elected official. And I want you to be, and to all be just as proud to be who you are as well. So happy Pride Month. With that, we will continue raising that, that pride flag, and thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandless, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I'd also like to thank all of you for coming this evening and sharing your story with us and how you really feel, because it's important. Last week, I, after the events that happened in fifth order, I, you know, stayed at my position and the problem I had with, I'm a big proponent of, of freedom of speech. I speak my mind, not afraid to do it, but not, and as I stated last week, not as a tool of intimidation. To put it in perspective, I stand in front of students every day, and them students are every gender, ethnic background, and sexual orientation. But my job as an educator, and I teach culinary arts, is to foster an environment that's safe, nurturing, and conducive for learning. And my students all put the same uniform on. They put their culinary uniform on, and we're all the same. And I have zero tolerance in, in my world, in my classroom, for hatred or bullying. So zero tolerance for that. And should that transcend here? Yeah. And last week, I was leaning towards the same way as Mr. King said. Out of respect for, you know, Robert's Rules and parliamentary procedure we follow, we follow and respect the president as the one to gavel. I mean, should I have jumped in? Yeah, I, as, after reflection, I should have. And, but moving forward, I mean, we all come to an agreement that, you know, we don't have to wait for just the direction of the president to do so. And so with that said, again, thanks for coming. Know that, you know, we do care. People come here and, and like Mr. Schuster said, attack us. We're pretty thick-skinned. We don't always like it, but we do care about every resident in the city, or we wouldn't be here. And we care about everyone equally, just so you know. All right? So on to other stuff. So last week, Mr. Spindler talked about the max sign thing. So I brought that to the attention of administration, that they're replacing signs in the city. And, you know, I was concerned about taking union work away from union workers. So the answer I received is, so the reason they're doing it is the city was awarded a multimodal grant to replace street signs and stop signs. All right? So I, I think along with that grant, they had to utilize a vendor. So fair enough. So Max Signs was the vendor for the projects. So once the signs are replaced, the old signs are picked up by DPW, and that material can potentially be reused if it's in good condition. So the union will continue to have that type of work. So we're not taking, I'm glad to hear that we're not replacing that type of work. Also, it's no secret that there's potholes everywhere, and everybody has an issue with them. I know our administration said, you know, they have a new system in place that's, and they're tracking more of the utility work and, and, you know, time limits as when they're supposed to be replaced or pave curb to curb, but these potholes still exist. So people have come to me almost daily, and you know what? Sometimes you, you just can't avoid them. If you avoid a pothole, you're going to hit If you avoid a pothole, you're going to hit a truck or something. So a person reached out to me and asked, what recourse do they have if your vehicle's damaged hitting a pothole in the city? And you know what? I'm old enough to remember, and this is years ago, that the city did provide some type of, I don't want to just call it compensation, but there was a resource. I remember people getting their muffler paid for it. This might be 30 years ago, but, so I inquired as, are we still doing anything like that? Or we probably should. So the answer I received was, and this, I want the public to know this, because it's ongoing, that the policy procedure for motorists in the city to file claims for damaged tires, et cetera, is citizens may pursue the utility companies directly with the utility. All right? I don't know how that process takes place, but at least it's a start. I got an answer. Maybe we can circle around and go back to administration and say, what does that look like? What does the resident actually have to do? Because the resident doesn't know the color coding of the utilities working on the road. We just found out what the color codes are a month ago. So how does a poor resident know what utilities is, that, you know, that pothole has come from, or who's responsible for it? So I think we need a little more information for the residents.
I'll get that information, sir.
And also to differentiate between the city-owned street that the utility companies are working on, or state-owned roads, because, Mr. Smear, last week you gave me a resource that I'm going to pass along too, that another option too is to reach out to PennDOT, because they do the majority of the work outside of utilities, except for our small paving projects that we do every year. So I think the residents, I think I need more information, and we need to be, you know, educated and informed as to, in detail, the resources available to the people that are incurring these damages on their vehicles.
We'll get that for you.
And then once we get it, let's put it in bullet form and put it on the website so people can access it themselves. All right? That'll be great if that happens. All right, so I'd love to thank the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority for, you know, their ribbon cutting the other day for the butterfly playground in Naog Park. Right? I want to commend them for the amount of work and effort they went into securing grants and community donations that supported that project. So kudos to them. I can't wait to check it out, and I've been at a couple parks outside of the city where there's butterflies and they're contained. It's pretty cool. So we'll have to check that out. Also, I got a concern brought to me. I hope I didn't lose it here. All right, so there is an abandoned vehicle, that's another vehicles, that's another situation we deal constantly, are brought to our attention. There is a black Dodge Ram that has been parked on the street in front of 125 South Everett in West Scranton that has not been moved in approximately three years. All right? It has a temporary paper license, and I'm sure the registration is out of date. So in addition to that, these neighbors are, you know, with the amount of rain we've had, first of all, this vehicle obstructs their views when they're backing out of their driveway. And the turned wheel directs the rain runoff toward their house, which floods their basement during heavy rain. So it must be happening a lot the past 90 days. So could you please alert code enforcement and the police to check this out and make sure, you know, we start the process with the abandoned vehicle?
I'll do that tomorrow.
All right? And I believe that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, no, no, let me report out to my friend who's been coming forward to me with issues up on East Mountain. One was Route 307, you know, with the amount of debris and the sidewalks that were covered with gravel or cinder or whatever. So I like to report out, because I know she's watching, because she watches these meetings, that on Route 307 sidewalks, under the I-81 North and I-81 South bridges on Music Street will be cleared in the next few days per Mike Hoffman of PennDOT. All right? So we're glad to hear that. And then also, the sidewalk she mentioned is going to be taken care of within a week or so. So I'm happy to report that out to that neighbor and residents. But in addition to that, part of that inquiry when I first gave it to you was the large construction vehicle that has parked off Music Street for six months or better. Do we get an update on that or any response?
That's still there. I'll follow up.
All right, well, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandless. First, I want to thank everyone for coming out. I understand the circumstances you're here weren't the greatest, but I believe, I know I will do better, and I believe all of the council will do better. I remember going to that podium the first time and standing in front of these council members, and I was petrified. I was soaking wet, and I was afraid to speak. So for you to come here and do that, and stand before us and speak concerns, you know, that speaks volumes. But I do appreciate everybody coming here, and I hope that everybody continues to come and keep us in line. Thank you all. A few things. The street signs that were on sale, I believe they were on Marketplace. They were, I looked at them, if you look at the names on them, you will see, I didn't write them down, but when we had cleaned out Ross Avenue or Ross Street, the DPW had a building down there, and that was all cleaned out. All of the old street signs and stuff that were down there were all thrown in recycled dumpsters, and then they were just all removed. Whatever happened with them, we don't know. But that could possibly be where all of those signs that were on Facebook Marketplace and stuff are. I did look at a couple of them, and they were very old, but that may be what happened to them. Also, there was regards to the fireworks. The city and county officials are in touch with Scrantonastic to work on the permit. So I know that is going to happen, and the county has been keeping us updated on their application. So I believe that is all going to be done before the fireworks. Also, the large boxes everybody's concerned about, that you drop off clothes and stuff, I remember them saying goodwill on them. I know there's a bunch of them now. The ones that, the only ones that we can do anything about is if they are not on private property, then the city can do something about it. But if they're on private property, then we'll have to go to the owner of the property if they're actually dumping trash there. Also, the city monitoring the housing authority on the water bills. I believe Park Gardens got notices, tenants got notices, that their water bills were not paid. So I did ask the mayor what happened, and the mayor said she spoke to the Scranton Housing Director, Lineit, when the water notices were posted. The notices were a surprise to the Scranton Housing Authority, and residents do not pay bills individually. Mr. Lineit said that there is no delinquency and that for that particular utility service. So that's what happened to the water. I'm not sure why they would have gotten them, but they are not responsible for the water bills. The housing authority is themselves. Also, for the, just a quick update on all of our stormwater projects. East Mountain, contract number one is under contract with RLE. Estimates were obtained, and they were hired. Tripp Park, legislation and contract are being drafted for Rutledge excavation. No easements are required there, so that can start. Third, the East Mountain contract number two, the engineering design is completed. We are awaiting 18 easements. They were sent out, and we've gotten one back. Kaiser Valley Engineering permitting is underway. City declared taking of property in Newton Township. It is, if you go up to the top of, anyway, where the turnpike crosses over the bridge, there was a large area there that the city is going to take, or trying to take, and install a retention pond to catch the water coming down from Newton Township before it actually inundates our citizens on the lower part of the mountain. So that is still in the works. I believe it either ended today, or it ends tomorrow, where they can either fight back or just take the money that we ought to offer them and let us build that retention pond. And we still have seven easements for that one. And North Scranton, engineering is nearing completion. There are six easement letters out, and zero have come back. Manuka, engineering is nearing completion, and we are awaiting an easement. Meadowbrook Project, 45 easements are needed. A total of six have been obtained. I know I've been through this before, and I'm not whining, but if somebody was going to fix a pipe that catches water from destroying my property, I think I would work a little closer. I understand there were some questions about the amount of money the city was going to pay people to have that easement. Some are permanent easement, some are just temporary. But there was one instance up on, on West Mountain, or in one of the developments where the engineer came back with the design, but didn't realize that we had 20 feet of easement built in, that we didn't have to ask to use that property. So some of the people were offered, say, $20,000, so we could eat, go into their property and do work, and, you know, put the stormwater piping in. It turned out, after we realized that we still had 20 feet that we didn't have to ask for, we may only need five feet. So some of those people might have gotten letters, say, look, we're only going to give you $4,000 to let us go on the property to fix this situation. And I believe a lot of people are not happy with that. So I have heard there are attorneys involved with that right now, but all I can do is urge everyone, we have the money now. We're not going to have it forever. If we don't get on the stormwater projects, the ones that have agreed to them, I'm not saying just take what they offer you, but I'm saying do something before you get to the end of the road, and there's not enough money to complete everything, because if you get to that point, the crying is all over. Do what you can to help and get the stuff fixed. It only benefits you. And I'm still surprised, there's still 45 in the Meadowbrook project. This has been going on, I couldn't even tell you how many years Meadowbrook has been going on, but it's a very long time. I'll go over this quickly, but the financial update report, the meeting I was at on May 28th, I will not read every one off, but every department is right around where they should be in expenditures. Everyone is, the average is about 33% to 43% of their spending, so everyone is under. And the interest on our tax dollars to date, not counting ARPA, is $197,265.35. That's the money that the city has made on your tax dollars, our tax dollars. As far as legislation this council has put forth on the agenda tonight, Councilman King has a street dedicating going through there. That's one. We have created a couple positions for our parks, that we called them blight positions. There was also the crossing guard legislation. There are many things. I can't remember them all, because once I deal with something and I think it's finished, I put it to bed, and then we move forward. But I'm sure if I have to, I can go back and maybe dig up. We do have the say in a lot of this also, and we do give our opinions on a lot of the legislation that comes down. We do change a lot of stuff and take it back to the administration. It doesn't all come down and just get passed, and you all know that, because you hear that arguing all the time, going back and forth, which is great for you, because we should argue back and forth. We should all have to negotiate with everything. We shouldn't just all, everything comes down here, should just be passed, like everyone believes it is, but it really isn't. So, but we are working on all of the legislation. We just don't push it through. That is all I have, Mr. Wollenberg.
Five B for introduction, an ordinance establishing a no parking zone along the easterly curb line of State Route 3025, known as Wyoming Avenue, from segment 0020, offset 850, to its intersection with Olive Street for a distance of 370 feet, to its intersection with Olive Street to allow for safe site distances for a proposed driveway.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five C for introduction, a resolution, amending file Resolution 27 of 2020, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Thomas J. McLean and Associates as City of Scranton Project Consultant, Recreation Needs Assessment, and Project Activities for the period December 1st, 2019 through November 30th, 2024, to amend the project engineer to Colwell Nagley Associates, Inc.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I just wanted to thank Mr. McLean for all the work that he's done with the city over the years in engineering, and it's my understanding from Mr. Smear that he's looking to get some projects off his plate so that he could retire and wind his business down. So this is just merely passing on this project to another company that's, you know, already doing the work. And so that, just wanted to thank him for his work.
Yes, and there will be no difference in the cost or the price. The job will not change, and everything will stay the same, except there'll be a different name on the end of the job. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five D for introduction, a resolution, ceremoniously dedicating Cliff Street adjacent to the Steamtown National Historic Site in honor of John M. Hart, Jr.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'm the one that pushed this legislation. Anyone that knew John Hart, he was a character. He passed away about two years ago. What a piece of work. This guy, his wife was a guidance counselor down at South Intermediate. His children went to Scranton High School. I spent a lot of time with John, went on some golf trips with him. He was incredibly knowledgeable about a lot of different things. He is probably the main reason that Steamtown National Historic Park exists in this city. So he wanted me to name the street for him before he passed away. I said, John, I just got on council. Can you give me a little time to get my feet wet here? Unfortunately, he passed away over the last few years, but he was a great guy and a great friend, and I'm proud to be able to do this for his family and for John. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. King.
I just wanted to thank Councilman King for bringing this to council. I think it's a great way to honor Mr. Hart, and the perfect spot to do it too, on that street over near Steamtown National Historic Park, which he was really dedicated to and passionate about, as well as Scranton as a city and bringing people to our city. So just appreciate this way of being able to honor him.
Thank you. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five E for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the Office of Economic and Community Development of the City of Scranton to the Department of Community and Economic Development's Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program for up to $250,000 to be used towards the Lace Village Dog Park project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I hope that they're successful in obtaining this grant. I would love to see our city have more dog parks. You know, someone who owns dogs and, you know, knows that there are a lot of other people who are looking for that type of space, and from what we discussed in caucus, this wouldn't just be for the residents of the Lace Village, but it would be nearby there, so obviously used by a lot of those people who have dogs, but it would be open to anyone. So I think this would be great, and I'm hoping it comes to fruition.
Thank you. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five F for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the Office of Economic and Community Development of the City of Scranton to the Department of Community and Economic Development's Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program for up to $200,000 to be used towards the Garrity Park Renovations project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth Order 6A, reading by title, filed to Council Number 78, 2025, an ordinance, amending the responsible contractor ordinance, RCO Chapter 113 of City Code, to improve implementation.
You have heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I moved that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh Order 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works or Adoption, filed to Council Number 77, 2025, approving and authorizing the acquisition by easement agreements, deed in lieu of condemnation, or otherwise of the necessary rights, franchises, licenses, easements, or title of land required for temporary and permanent easements in order to complete the Kaiser Valley Flood Protection Project, Group Four of easements, and authorizing the file of a declaration of taking pursuant to Section 302 of the eminent domi- domain code if required.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandry?
Yes.
Mr. Smear?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 225, 2025, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of a grant application by the City of Scranton to FEMA Fiscal Year 2024 Fire Prevention and Safety Grant for up to $300,000 for public education and risk mitigation projects.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandry?
Yes.
Mr. Smear?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth Order, no business at this time.
If there is no further business at this time, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you all for coming. This meeting is adjourned.